All right, good evening. This is the October 16th, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I am calling to order. Our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, the clerk, please do the roll.
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. Next on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. I did notice that we did have, and I appreciate this, by the way, we did have some people sign up to speak during the pavement management piece of this. I will tell you that that is a public hearing, and so what we'll do is unless you're, if you're here and want to speak on that, or maybe didn't sign up, we'll take that when we do the actual public hearings under nine B. And then I'll just, what I'll do is I'll just read from top to bottom off the list. Have you come up to the podium. You get three minutes to speak on whatever the topic or the process that you want. And then after the, I get through the list here, I will then see if anybody else wants to speak. But because we're going to move all those to the, the public hearing portion of the, of the meeting this evening, was there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close, open forum, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, six is presentations. We have one this evening. The presentation this evening is the Terrence Patrick Cahill Award recognition to Officer, Officer Sorgard and the K-9 Odin. Okay, he is here. I didn't see him out there. All right, so we've got some great, exciting news to share. You probably already saw some of it on social media, but I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Neil Storning, who will walk us through this and why we're here this evening.
Sounds good. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. This evening, I'm here to discuss the recent accolades of Officer Matt Sorgard and his canine partner Odin. Officer Sorgard was paired with Odin at the beginning of last year. During that time, he trained with the Washington County Sheriff's Office, and they got him up to speed to be a patrol dog team. This past June, he attended his first regional trial. We certify with the United States Police K-9 Association, which is one of the hardest certifying boards in the country for police canines. At a regional trial, he did fantastic. He obtained a fifth place overall finish and obtained the top rookie dog team award. And that's for the top new handler, new dog combination. In addition, he also received a Nationals qualifying score. At that point, Officer Sorgard expressed interest in wanting to go to the national competition, which was held in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, in the start of October. And the Public Safety Board was able to assist us in funding so he could make the trip down there to compete. There were 67 canine teams in attendance from across the nation. They're all the top canine teams from the qualifying regions. The certification test consists of the same thing as a regional certification trial, which is your obedience, your article search, which is searching for evidence, your box search, which is searching for human odor, and your apprehension events. During the event, Officer Sorgard did absolutely fantastic with his partner Odin. He received the first place for the top overall canine team in the combined apprehension score. He also received the Terrence Patrick Cahill Award, which is a prestigious traveling trophy, and that's for your highest combined scores in obedience and apprehension work. And he just barely missed the top overall honors, receiving second place of the overall canine team, just getting edged out by Washington County's Deputy Brandon Yetter and K-9 Huck, who happened to be his trainer for canine school when he attended last year. So I think Washington County left a little on the table for us, but we'll, we'll work on that into the future here. Officer Sorgard and Odin are a fantastic team, and they've done very well. Generally, rookie canine teams don't even go to Nationals. There's no rookie dog award because most don't go. It's usually the more experienced handlers, more experienced dogs. And to go as a rookie and get second place overall and win many of those awards is absolutely fantastic and something that we're really proud of for Officer Sorgard and Odin. And then we'd just like, again, to thank the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board. They helped fund our canine unit, and they helped with the purchase and training costs of Odin and Officer Sorgard, and they also assisted us in the travel expenses to get down to Baton Rouge, Louisiana. So I'd like to just have a round of applause for Officer Sorgard and K-9 Odin.
Well, yeah, and I, I think it is amazing when you think about how far the two of you have come. I do remember, was it about a year ago, when we were doing, at Strawberry Fest? And he decided he didn't really want to do any work anymore? So it's like, oh, my goodness, this is going to be fun, but it's amazing. And I, and you acknowledged your, but I did want to recognize the, the Public Safety Board because that was one of the things is, hey, he wanted to go. It proved extremely beneficial. You know, national award winning is, is unbelievable. So thank you to the Public Safety Board for helping both finance the, our canines within the city of Cottage Grove, but also for the trip down to Baton Rouge so we could, so he could compete. And you should all be proud. I am. I, I know I definitely am within the city of Cottage Grove that we have the best of the best, and you've got it here, and it's not, not just best of the best of our officers, but it's also our canine. Any, Council, any other comments that you want to make?
Did you maybe want to get a picture with the Public Safety Board to come up? And do that, is that okay?
Absolutely.
No, that's fine.
All right. All right, let's do it. Come on up.
Hold the ball.
Do we have officers grab the trophy as a whole besides Odin and his?
He's just paying attention.
What?
You guys come on up in here.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I guess I didn't say the Russian.
Yeah.
He's trying to remind us.
Get in.
Are you grown?
Yep. Who are we looking at?
Look at the con. Over here first, there we go, there we go. Okay. Couple more seconds.
There we go, thank you.
All right.
So these, when we got them, he's trained, so they had no training at all. So four weeks of initial training. Minimal retraining.
But Sean, I was on Ryan. Yeah.
Yeah, so they cuff the, the champion. So we're ready to cuff. And he cuffs seven.
Thank you. Thanks again, and fantastic job. All right, so next on our agenda is consent. This is the opportunity for Council, if you want to poll anything for separate discussion on consent this evening. Is there anything you want to poll? Councilmember Olson?
I'd like to pull item D.
Item D, which is a donation, it's okay. Anybody else? Sorry, not seeing any. Councilmember Olson, you want to mention a donation?
I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Item D is a recommendation to adopt Resolution 2024-144, accepting donations for 2024. We do this periodically throughout the year as donations come in, and we always like to take a minute to just recognize the people who are making an investment here in the city of Cottage Grove. And in this case, we only have one to talk about this evening, and that is a donation of $2,000 that was received from a gentleman named Chris Germin. I think I'm saying that right. If I didn't, I certainly apologize. And this is one of our memorial benches. So for those who don't know about the memorial benches, our Park and Rec Department has a program through which you can ask for and receive a memorial bench to be placed in one of the city parks. And, and they're a really nice way for people to remember loved ones they may have lost over the course of, you know, a given period of time. I've seen a lot of memorial benches out there where people go and, you know, they'll actually sit and, and they'll be in their favorite place, and they'll, you know, talk to the person whom that bench memorializes, and I think it's a very meaningful thing that we do. So certainly, if you know of anybody who may be interested in that service, you can reach out to our Park and Recs Department. You can call City Hall here, 651-458-2800, and ask to be transferred, and they'll help you with that. But this particular donation was for a memorial bench in remembrance of Cole Germin.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing that we didn't poll anything else on consent, Council, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
I motion to move, to approve consent.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Cambada. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you are here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. Moving along, eight is approved disbursement, eight A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. She, you beat her up.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so now we're going to move into public hearings, which we do have three this evening. The first one is Tall Weeds Assessment Hearing, and our Finance Director Brenda Melonowski is going to walk us through this one, so welcome, Brenda.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the city council, this evening is a public hearing for noxious weeds. And we do this through our city code process, and specifically in our plant and we, regarding plants and weeds and zoning districts, we state that unplanted or developed lands within the city limits, it shall be unlawful to allow or permit any growth, growth of grass or weeds to a height greater than eight inches. And we have a, a method to abate those conditions, and I just have the process here to review with you. Our code enforcement officer, they mail a notice to the property owner with five days' notice to abate those conditions, and that happened 83 times in 2024. If that property owner does not abate those conditions within that timeframe, the city hires a contractor to abate the conditions, and so 12 times in 2024, that happened. An invoice is then sent to the property for the costs that the city incurred to abate those conditions. That property owner then has the ability to pay that invoice. If they don't pay it, then we go under the Minnesota statutes 429 process, and so that's where we are this evening. At the last council meeting, we declared the costs. We sent a notice to these property owners of the assessment hearing tonight. We published it as required, and so tonight, we're here to hold the public hearing. Once the assessment is approved, the property owner will get another notice with 30 days to pay again. If they do not, then we would certify it to be collected with the 2025 property taxes. With that, I have the recommendation on the screen.
All right, thank you, Brenda. Any comments, Council, before I open up public hearing? All right. So at this point, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there is anybody that wants to speak on this particular item, is welcome to do so. Anybody at all?
No, I do.
Yeah, I, I just need you to go up and state your name and address for the record, please. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Nancy Prizavilla. As you're reading that, now, if they have a wooded area in their yard, you can't take out the buckthorn and the other weeds that are like up to here? Is my, is what I'm trying to figure out.
Okay, I do, just for the record, I need you to do your address, too, if you would, please.
Oh, 7764 Jocelyn Avenue, South Cottage Grove.
Thank you, thank you. I just needed that. Ryan, do you want us, can you or Jennifer, do you want to speak on her question?
Mayor, members of the council, that specific item, it might be better, we do have staff in the room that we can maybe just take it offline. These residents that are specifically on your role this evening, we're in a maintained, more manicured state. None of them were related to buckthorn or wooded areas, just for clarification.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I don't think if it's something that's tucked behind a house or something like that, we typically don't get involved in that. It's more of what's being seen from the street.
Oh, from the street? So if it's in the backyard, it doesn't?
Yeah, I mean, if a neighbor's complaining, we might talk about that, but I don't know honestly if we've actually been in there. Connor, do you want to, Connor Jakes, you want to speak on this one? I know you're the one that kind of helps with this.
Right, yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, generally, code enforcement, just for overall processes, complaint-driven for the most part, whether that's front yard, backyard. However, we do work with property owners as the process indicated. Generally, it is specifically related to the grass height. Weeds would fall under kind of a separate category, still the eight inch, but we work with property owners on that for the buckthorn removal. All the letters in reference tonight or properties was related to grass specifically as ordinance indicates, so, but generally, is grass-related.
Sounds good, thank you, Connor. Ed, is your question okay? Okay, all right. Anybody else like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead then and close the public hearing for Tall Weeds Assessment Hearing. We have a motion before us on the screen. Who, Council, would like to take that?
I would move that we adopt Resolution 2024-142, adopting service charges for the removal of noxious weed and plants from private property.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next move into B, which is the 2024 pavement management hearing, and I believe our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, is going to start us off on this one. So Ryan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we are here to discuss the 2024 pavement management process and, and kind of the final step in our process throughout the year and the assessment hearing. Real briefly, right away, I just, we always like to talk about the history of pavement management. So this map goes back to 2010. Pavement management projects have been happening since the mid 1990s with the implementation of our special assessment policy through our infrastructure management task force. So a long track record of doing these residential-type projects, along with some main roads that we've done as well throughout many decades here in Cottage Grove. The project area this year, you can see on the map, just north of 80th Street, construction range from 1990 to 1994, so 30 to 34-year-old streets that we were completing the project on this year. And what I really want to touch on, from my perspective, before I turn over to our Assistant City Engineer, Crystal Raleigh, is talking about a couple of, you know, challenges we had this year and some more, you know, things that we heard, you know, from the residents in the neighborhood, and really just want to speak to those directly. First is project schedule. You know, as we go through a project like this, we do a lot of notices on what's happening, what's the upcoming work. And we certainly heard some concerns from residents on, you know, that change throughout the summer. You know, a lot of that was, was obviously rain delays. We've had previous this year, two years with very extreme droughts. This year, fortunately, for a lot of good reasons, we had a lot of rain. It does make construction a challenge. I did look between the months of June, July, August, there were 39 days with rain. So really, you're talking every other day, every third day with rain. And in Cottage Grove directly, we had, you know, roughly 22 inches of rain, with the average being 13. So we didn't quite double our summer average, but we close to double. And that unfortunately has a major impact on projects like this. A lot of the work you physically can't do while it's raining, a lot of work, you have to let the work dry out, like when it's a gravel base, right? You can't be paving when it's saturated. So that certainly had an impact this summer. I do apologize for that to the residents because, I mean, it's something that's out of our control, but we certainly want to deliver a project as fast as we can. I will say that the completion date for the final completion or substantial completion with that wear course paving was set at August 30th, and we did do that on August 20th. So even with the rain, we still did meet our, our deadlines that were set in the contract. The other one is curb damage. So when we're done placing that new curb and we put that first base of asphalt, the first layer of asphalt, we have a big processor, right? A lot of equipment, and a big part of that is rolling that, getting that density and getting that rolling pattern right up to the curb, because really, one of the failure points is actually where that pavement meets the curb. So it is very critical to get close. Something we do always see in any project is some damage to the curb. After that's done, that requires some replacement. Unfortunately, this project, we saw a much greater extent due to the work that the contractor did. So about 15% of the curb had to be removed and replaced after that first base course of paving was done. This is something that the contractor did fully at their cost. There was no additional cost to the project, to the city, to the residents from that. There was also additional impacts to driveway access, right? So even though there was no cost, I do want to acknowledge that there certainly was an impact to the everyday lives of the folks in this neighborhood. It's another thing I'd like to apologize for. It's something that maybe the city didn't cause, but it's still our project, right? And we have to own that, and just want to really make mention of that directly. There was obviously some additional restoration, reseating that needed to be done, and irrigation work, and that's something that was also done at the contractor at no cost as well. So while there was not the, the monetary side of it, there was certainly the impact to the daily lives of our residents, so just want to make mention of those two issues. And with that, I will turn it over to Crystal Raleigh. She'll talk more about some project specifics and then the assessment process.
Sounds good, thank you. Welcome, Crystal.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate Ryan for talking through some of our project challenges, and I'll talk through some of the project successes that we had out there. This is, I'm going to share some before and after photos of the project. This is Jenner Avenue in front of you. You'll see in that before photo, a lot of cracking, a lot of patching. And then in the after photo, we've got a nice, new, smooth mat of pavement out there. Jocelyn Avenue, a lot of pockets where water can collect in that before photo and get in there and freeze and break up that pavement. And in the after photo, a nice, smooth pavement again. You'll see in the before photo, kind of way in the back, you can see a manhole. We were able to address several issues that we had out there with utilities with this project, so that was a success. And then on 79th Street, again, more cracking, more patching. And I would note that the curb was 100% replaced with this project, so. The total project costs came in at $1,122,149.32. This bill gets paid between a variety of sources. Several sources are our own utility funds, so the sanitary sewer utility, water utility, the stormwater utility, and street lighting funds pick up significant shares of this project cost. Also, the general levy does pay for a portion of the costs, so the general levy pays on this one And then the assessments, if approved tonight, would pick up the remainder of $502,685.69. On the screen here is the assessable properties. Within this neighborhood, we had 79 assessable properties. You'll see the two skinny blue slivers there. Those are city park properties. On the city, does pick up the costs for the street improvements in front of city properties, so that is not included in that calculation to be assessed. So that is not included in that calculation to be assessed. Like I said, 79 assessable properties. In our assessment policy, we refer to these as residential buildable lot equivalents, RBLEs. The estimated assessment, back at the beginning of the project, earlier this winter, was $6,647.65. And then every year, the city does a special benefit appraisal to see what type of benefit this, the properties would have by having a nice fixed street in front of their house. The special benefit appraisal supports about $7,500 of a benefit. So we never assess more than that amount. So our proposed assessment is in line with that. The actual assessment came in at $6,363.11. We did come in a little under budget on this project, so it dropped a little bit. And if the property owners choose to pay over this 15 years, the average annual payment would be $591.40. Some of the terms of the assessment, if this is paid by November 15th, there would be no interest charge if it's paid in full. Partial payment is allowed. So a property owner could pay any portion more than $500 towards that assessment. And then the remaining unpaid portion would be payable over the next 15 years. That is subject to an interest rate that is 1.5% over our bond rate. So in this case, the interest rate would be 4.8%. And finally, deferral is available for those that meet qualifications, disabled, military, 65 years of age or older. Proof is needed for our deferrals. And if anybody is interested in that, they can work with our finance department and engineering to get that set up. It's important to note that interest does still accrue during that deferral period. Like I said, oops, I went backwards. So I, one more thing I wanted to note is that we did receive two objections to the assessment. The city attorney is here to speak to those objections. And with that, the recommendation is on the screen before you, and I'll stand for questions.
Do you want, do you want to do the attorney first, and then we'll see if counsel has any questions? Did you wanna?
Mayor, members of the council, at this time, the two objections are in writing in front of you
Yep.
for this evening. And so that's just to put those into the record. At this time, we would be willing to stand for questions after you open the public hearing.
Okay, first, before I open the public hearing, and again, what I'll do is go down the list. And then if there's others that want to speak, is welcome to do so. Is there any questions for staff at this point from counsel? At this? Okay. So what we'll do now then is I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. As I mentioned earlier, I'll just kind of go down the signup sheet. So thank you for those that put your names out there. And then if you would, just come up and state your name and address for the record. And you have up to three minutes to speak or ask questions. I know what our staff will do is take some notes down. And at the end of getting all the comments that we've heard, staff will then provide any feedback to those comments at that time. And then we'll see how things go from there. So I believe it's Dan Sullivan, his first. So Dan?
Hello, Mayor, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dan Sullivan, currently, my address is 7869 Jenner Avenue, South. I am a 60-year resident of Cottage Grove. I am here to actually request the council to consider putting off the vote on the proposed amendment of the Prestige Estate for the pavement 2024 till January 25 or early spring. The reason for this request is, is we, the citizens of Prestige, we just literally got the notifications of the assessments in, in early October. And that only gives us two weeks since then. And that really doesn't give us enough time to examine the assessment rules as citizens. So I'd like, I would like to request that, you know, that be put off until January or early spring. I'd also believe that the citizen neighborhood would appreciate delay payment of this assessment till after the holiday season. I realize that this will create a strain in, probably on the finance of this project and, and the city staff are having to redo a number of notices and communications with the, with the county. I would also like to request a meeting with the city staff and the homeowners of Prestige Estates. As a longtime resident of Cottage Grove, I've seen many of these projects. My parents, my in-laws, have all seen these projects go on. And this project did not go off as it, what we thought it should have gone. I do appreciate the acknowledgement that it didn't go as well as it could have. Some of the things that we've kind of noticed is that the curbs were installed lower than the original. So what you actually get is, instead of it sloped right in, now you kind of get like this little dip now that, right at where it comes in. You know, it causes a tripping hazard. The original, and now all of our curbs are what I like to call the curbs in many colors because of how many, the amount of curbing that had to replace. I find it a little, I think it's more than 15%. At least it was, at least on our street. It was probably closer to 50%. So now, as you look down our street, not, the, the curbs are all different colors. And if you look down, it's straight, they're actually not even straight. They actually kind of, kind of have a little wave to them. My other question, my other concern, or the neighbors' concern was, the original paved road needed to be cut up, patched up, and got beat up during the construction process to install the new curb sections. It kind of makes, I think, a lot of us wonder, what kind of warranty are we gonna get with this? I mean, a lot of us are being assessed 15%, you know, for, for over 15, over 15 years. We just don't want to have to redo this in 15 years. I mean, we've already paid for it once. You know, this thing's already been patched up, put together, kind of mothballed. So I think we'd like to have some kind of reassurances that this thing is going to last for the time that we're paying for it. Another question with the neighbors', parking was very limited. So my question would be, can the construction equipment not be parked on the site? Can it be, can it be in the future projects maybe moved to the Public Works Department? You know, I mean, a lot of times, our parking is limited, and then we end up having to park even farther away because of the construction equipment is sitting close to where we have to live. And the other thing that was brought up is the communication from the contractor on start dates was very poorly communicated. There were a couple of times that we, they said that they were gonna, in their website, they said they were gonna start on a Monday. And literally, they were out there on a Friday afternoon, when everybody's gone up to their lakes. And it's like, so we have to run, a lot of the neighbors had to run around and try to get people's cars moved so they would still have access to them as these, as this was being taken out. Lastly, it sounds like my time's just about up. I am currently a consultant for the electric company. And I'd like to suggest you find a new security measure for the streetlight splice boxes. What's in place can be easily be accessed with a socket wrench, and the copper cables can be easily stolen out of the conduits. So, you know, I think you got some security issues there. Anyway, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you. All right, next I have, I think it's, is it Dan and Nancy?
No, we're, we're good here. I don't just sign in, I didn't know, I wasn't speaking.
Oh, okay, that's, all right, no, you're good. Eli, I know you, you wrote the letter, but do you want to come up and speak?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, Eli Wyman, 79th Street, South. I'm here to just talk about one thing, and that is to explain why the special assessment is illegal. Boils down to just the requirement that the city has to prove that there's a special benefit. So they claim that the special benefit is given to us because the repair has increased our property value by at least $6,300. The city has not provided proof that the property values went up, nor will they until this goes to district court. So I'm just gonna put aside the amount for now and just assume or pretend that the city's correct that our property's values did increase. If a newly paved road increases property value, that means that an older degraded road decreases property value. This property value increase, assuming the city proves that there is one, is only realized if the homeowner sells their house that moment in time when the road is new. Should the homeowner stay for another 30 years, the road is once again damaged. And that means that the residents need to, they would have paid $6,300. They would have gained $0 in special benefit. And now the city is once again going to ask them to pay for another road repair and claim that it's gonna raise their property value. I want to point out a couple of items that Councilman Olson said during the last hearing that approved the road repair. I quote, "I'm a taxpayer, you're a taxpayer, my kids go to school, your kids go to school. City has assets it has to protect. That's why we have a police department, that's why we have a fire department, that's why we have a public works department. All of us taxpayers pay into that." He went on, "Part of the responsibility of the local government entity is to ensure every street in the city, which our assets are in good shape, because that allows us people to live in a community that people want to live in and feel safe and comfortable." Couple of things that I find very interesting about these statements. He listed all the things which the city maintains via taxes, suggesting the road repair fits into the same category. He also mentioned that the responsibility of local government is to ensure streets are in good shape. Lastly, he said that the reason that the, to keep the roads in good shape is to allow the people to want to live here, a benefit for the city. A reason the Councilman member Olson never mentioned for the road repair was to provide a special benefit to the residents. The same hearing, when we questioned the special benefit, we were accused of not wanting to pay our fair share or wanting to others to pay for the road. A gross misrepresentation of the challenges we brought up. It's not about not wanting to pay for our fair share, it's about doing it in the correct way, in a way that abides by the Constitution of Minnesota. The illegal use of special assessments to maintain roads needs to stop. You're taking advantage of the citizens that don't know enough about the topic to challenge the predatory practice. Set taxes at the correct level in order to pay for the road repairs. That'll give you a better idea of what the actual taxes are and perhaps allow city officials to think twice before bragging about the low level of taxes, something that also occurred in that meeting. So today, I fully expect the council to approve the special assessment, not because they believe that they are in the right, but because it's the easy way, it's the way it's been for many years. The alternative would mean doing actual work to change the process, to balance a new budget, to raise taxes. So if you sit here and legitimately tell us that you believe there's a special benefit to us, the citizens you serve, you're lying to us, you're lying to yourselves. If you choose to address the items I brought up, we don't need to hear anything about paying our fair share. We don't need to hear any speeches about how we're one city. All we need is to do, to hear is one thing, and that's explain how we are receiving a special benefit, knowing that the road will degrade, reducing any property value gains, if any, and requiring another road project in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Ray Buttermore? Ray?
Oh, no, I was, I must have signed the wrong, that's.
Oh, no, no, you're okay. You're, you're fine, you're fine. And then Nancy, is it Ray Beck?
No, Prisavilla, and I, I thought we were signing in.
Oh, no, you're fine, okay. All right, it sounds good. Steve Gunderson?
Same.
Same thing? We're gonna make you all come up here and talk. And then Jake?
I want to hear what I have to say.
And then Jake Robinson?
Jake Robinson, also on 79th Street at 9501. Just to piggyback off of what Eli said as well, I'm here to petition that we do not adopt the assessment. There is no special benefit that a new road has to our properties. It's insulting to, to pretend that it does, doesn't. In preparation for this, I actually did have two appraisals done on my properties, one before and one after. It's less than $1,000 property value, not 75. I took pictures of thickness of the road, which apparently needed to be replaced because it could potentially fail. It's never gonna fail. The road is plenty thick, plenty fine. St. Paul Park has never replaced any of their roads. They don't have, they don't have the same thing where they go through and shake the property owners down. Their roads have never failed, and I spend a lot of time down in St. Paul Park. When you talk about special benefits, what about fire stations? What about properties near a fire station? Do we shake down those property owners because their house is close to a fire? Therefore, fire department doesn't have to go as far, service their, their house in case of a fire? And then also to piggyback off of the tax portion of it, you know, how many assessments did we do this year? One, just, just ours? If you spread that out amongst how many property owners, business owners in Cottage Grove, I don't think that equates to 500 and some dollars for a property owner. I think if we do it the right way, spread it across, we can still do the work we want to do without lumping somebody with a $6,500 bill that needs to be paid. And also piggyback off of it, I don't know how the $7,500 special benefit was, was attributed, but I'm assuming it has to do with aesthetics. That goes right into what we're talking about here. The road, the curbs are not, they're not, they're not exactly how they're supposed to be. They're not lined up, they're all different colors. The driveways don't match the concrete in the driveways anymore. So what does that have? What, what value does that have to the property owner now? There's just no logic to this, there's no logic, there's no reason to it. I think this is just how it's always been done. I can't find any record that it's ever been challenged in district court. And I plan to explore all options in doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, was there anybody else? That was everybody who had signed up, either to speak or just to be here. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nancy Schuvaler of 7929 Jenner Avenue, South. And I just want to address Lake Jenner in front of my home and several other neighbors. And it was very destructive to our property. I don't know what happened during construction. I know they put silk lining in the sewers there. I don't know if 79th or Jocelyn had their own private lakes, I do not know. But ours was terrible. And over Labor Day weekend, we had all that torrential rain. And we have a camera out in front of our house, and we were out of town. And it went all the way up to our boulevard, boulevard tree and, and passed and washed out everything that they did. And I know my husband was in contact with you. Thank you for your assistance in that. But I don't know if it's been fixed because we haven't had the major rainstorm. And I don't know if we're gonna count, encounter that again, or it's gonna wash out our boulevards and destroy. I mean, it's, it's terrible. I mean, it was way past. So I don't know if that has been addressed and if other property owners on the other streets had that issue. But with, with the pavement being not necessarily straight and the curbs, I don't know for drainage issues if we're gonna have that in our quadrant going forward. That is a concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Was there anybody else that wants to speak? Okay. Yeah, you got her.
I'm Steve Gunderson, I'm at 7774 Jenner Avenue, South. I was the lucky one where Phase 1 ended at my property and Phase 2 started at my property. So I got to deal with it the whole shot. I live next door to the sod father. He's crazy about his lawn. It's been hellacious with this whole summer, it's been bad. I was told my grass was gonna look like, because I have to work hard to keep my grass, to keep up with that guy. I was told my grass was gonna be restored to the level that it was before. They put topsoil down and made a little dip for me. So now I've got this dip. I bought my own sod. Dan coordinated sod for all of us on our street. We paid our money to get it, we laid it. And then they came out and ripped up the curb. They just painted it pink. I wanted to say to them, just leave it, I'm good. Because I didn't want to deal with the sod again. Now, the only piece of sod that looks good is the stuff that the contractor laid after the fact, right? The sapphire laid looks like garbage because they put topsoil down, and then it rained, and then it sank. I mean, it's, it's really, really frustrating. So you're gonna do what you're gonna do, but it's just, it's really frustrating the way that this whole thing went down. It was really bad. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any? Yes. Yeah.
I'm gonna finish it off. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback off.
My name's Dan Schuvaler, I live at 7929 Jenner. Myren has seen the videos, Myren has seen, we've been in communication. The contractor did come out after, did take care of things. But you know, it is so late in the season to try to seed or to do any of this. I did go out and I did buy sod from Gertens, and I sotted my whole front. Because I knew it's too late. Hundred bucks out of my pocket. And I think at the end of the day, having three guys come out, drop dirt, dot seed, everything they were doing, they probably could have did sod for a whole lot less money, you know? could have did sod for a whole lot less money. You know, leave it at that.
Thank you. Oh, I think we'll speak to that in a little bit here. So, anybody else then at this point? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Dewey Peters, I live at 9497 79th Street, and I just want to kind of get in on the, the workmanship, the communication. I, like a lot of neighbors here, re-sodded their yard, only to get pink lines put on the curbs and all the sod come out again, so we get to do it again. In that letter, they said that they would fix sprinklers if they wrecked them. I dug mine out, put flags around them, they still tore them off, no one fixed them. So I think that, with the integrity of the road is also compromised. I mean, if you take a trencher and lay it down on a road, you're not compacting that soil back to what it was when the big machines were doing it. So then, in my opinion, every place you pull them curbs out, they ain't gonna last 30 years. They're gonna start sinking and they're gonna fall apart, because water's gonna get in there, it's gonna erode underneath there. I guess my question is, is did the city properly vet this company that did this work? Because I can guarantee you that someone from the city told me that whoever did Phase One, the crew that did Phase One was kind of a hack, or I can't remember the term he used. But I got news for you, that wasn't their first job. So someone must have known that this crew was not that good. Because when you low-drown on Jocelyn, their, their job turned out pretty nice, for the most part. They got a few curbs that were bad, but I'll bet on 79th Street, we took out 50% better. So my guess, my question is, is the city actually look out for the homeowners here, or did they take the lowest bid, and now we're suffering the consequence of it? Because granted, I ain't gonna see that road deteriorate, I'll be out of there long before that. But Jake and Eli and some of these younger ones, they're gonna be there and probably get assessed again before we get to that 30-year mark. So I guess my point is, is, is what did we really do here for the city? Did the city really do what they're supposed to do to make sure that we got what we're actually paying for? And the price, you know, we've, we'd talked about the price, and the price is the price. But did, did the homeowners really get what, what they had coming, or did they just kind of get passed over? I mean, there were places where they wouldn't put the wings on the driveways. And a guy told me, the reason he didn't want to put the wings on my driveway was because the seams on the curb didn't line up at the end, because they were formed the other way. And I said, "Come on, dude." I mean, you put the wings on there. Down the street, they put one wing on one side, didn't put one on the other. So, I guess, whoever vetted this company probably needs to look at their question and answer period again, just to see, you know, because this, this, this wasn't, this didn't turn out the way it should have. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Melissa Fortuna, 7909 Jenner Avenue South. I just wanted to piggyback off the communication regarding when they had to rip up the, the curb to redo it. You know, we were super diligent making sure that we followed the rules about when they first laid the curb, don't drive over it, seven to 10 days. Make sure you park your cars out, so you, because you will not be able, you will, you will damage the integrity of the curb. So we were very respectful of that. They came in, they tore up the curb that they needed to tear up because it, it was, it was not to the quality that it needed to be. Nothing was flagged off. We had to take it upon ourselves to protect the sections, at least in our yard, to protect the sections that they had replaced with whatever sticks were left over, whatever, whatever you call the tripods or the sawhorses, whatever they're called, with the lights, to make sure that it was protected, so nobody would park on it, nobody would drive on it. Nothing was ever communicated, now you can drive on it again. It was almost like that curbing, it was put in, and we were never communicated when we could go over it again. So I, I feel that the integrity of the new curbing that was put in, or the replacement curbing, that is of concern, as some of the other property owners mentioned. What is the integrity? How is it gonna hold up? And I just wanted to make that known, that the communication on that was really, was, was not what it should have been. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else yet that would like to? Okay, before I close the public hearing, I think what I'll, you may start with Jennifer, you, or do you want me to go? We'll start with you and then kind of work our way around, and then maybe council might have some questions, too.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, I think what you've heard tonight is definitely the challenges that we had in regards to our communication, working with our contractor. And as we started off this evening, we started off acknowledging it didn't go well. As I like to say, we had an operator on a roller who had a really bad day. And that unfortunately affected our residents. And so for that, we apologize. And I will reiterate, they did not pay for it. The city did not pay for it, taxpayers did not pay for it. Those that put in their sod themselves, we did, the contractor did work to replace that and to replace the irrigation. Sometimes they didn't do a good job, right? And so unfortunately, we tried to do something right, and they still got it wrong. And so it has taken a lot to continue to refix that. I know the engineering team will address things more specifically in the items, but I do want to continue to acknowledge our apologies for that. You know the hundreds of miles of pavement that we've replaced over the years, and have heard many stories, but maybe not as hard as this evening. And so we do apologize for that. In regards to the contractor, they were the little bit on the project, and engineering can speak to it more. But they are a contractor that's worked in our community many times, and we have not had this issue. And so unfortunately, if you can think in your mind, having a bad day, that roller operator had a bad day. And they did strike the edge of that curb. And that curb replacement really is important to ensure that we get the ceiling of the asphalt to the actual edge of the curb, so we don't get penetration of water there. So that is actually extremely important to us. And so that's why we did hold the contractor to that standard. But as, I'm sorry, Mayor, you can tell that my engineering side of me just wants to go through a lot of the engineering, so I will stop talking about engineering, go back to some other items. The first resident indicated, you know, the challenge regarding paying this assessment. Counsel, I know when you look at a $6,000 assessment, I know that gives you pause, right? That is a large number. And especially when you look at a full curb replacement, that is a hefty assessment. And so I know that you're all looking at it with pause, and that any decision tonight you would make, you don't make lightly, because that is a burden that our residents have to pay. But as we go through for consistency with our policy with 45% assessment to the residents, I would caution you that consistency is extremely important. As Ryan says, we have assess projects since 1996. In regards to delaying, there's a few challenges. First of all, you know that you have set your preliminary levy for 2025. You cannot go higher on that levy, you are now capped. When you adopt your final levy, you can always go down, but you cannot go up. And in that levy, you already took into account what the debt issuance would be for this pavement management. So, the total project cost has already been paid out, you know, to the contractor. We've already made those payments, we have debt issuance. That's like, for the residents, that's like paying our mortgage. So we still have to pay that next year. So if we delay, there's that, that issue financially of how you make up that difference to make that mortgage or debt payment. One thing that I would indicate is, you know, seven months isn't a lot, right, for residents to be able to save up. We did notify them in March of what the proposed assessment would be. And so I can recognize seven months to save $6,000 can be challenging. I would encourage residents, this does not go on to your taxes until May of 2025 is the first time you see it. You are able to make a full payment. So let's say on year three, you have saved up the money to pay it in full off of your taxes. You can pay it at full at that time without additional interest being accumulated. So, you're not locked in that you have to stay for 15 years on that. So if you would like to save the money on the interest, you can pay it off early and full. Or you can also make that minimum payment of $500 to reduce it. So those are some options to residents in regards to the assessment. But counsel, I know you're feeling it, as you look at these numbers, those are big numbers. And so I just wanted to remind you of the financial obligation we have as a city to pay our debt service, but then also just to remind residents different options of how you can financially bear that burden. And I think at this point, I will turn it over to the attorney to talk about the special benefit, and then we'll go over to engineering, and they can talk more about the specifics that we heard.
Sounds good.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. With regard to the special benefit, as has been mentioned before, it's the, it's measured by the increase in market value to the property as a result of the project itself. With regard to the appeal of that amount, that would actually be a fact issue then in district court, where we would bring in our appraiser and establish that special benefit number of $7,500. And then correspondingly, the individual challenging that amount would, would present their kind of benefit appraisal to establish obviously a number below that number. So with regard to the appellate process and the special benefit, that's kind of how that would work out. Again, with regard to the special benefit, it's, it is that analysis of the increased market value to the property.
Maybe one other thing before we pop over there. There was a kind of a comment regarding the constitutionality of it. Do you want to speak on that? On, on assessments?
Sure, Mayor, members of the council. So the authority to impose a special assessment for street improvement projects or improvement projects does flow from the Minnesota Constitution, where the legislator has been granted the authority to authorize local municipalities to levy and collect special assessments for local improvement projects. That authority is then codified under statute, under 429021, which authorizes the city to engage in street improvement projects through construction, deconstruction, or maintenance of pavement, gutters, sidewalks, things of that nature. The authority also flows from case law established through the district and appellate courts that have recognized that authority under Section 429 to impose special assessments for, again, local street improvement projects under that statutory authority.
Okay, thank you. And now to Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll try and cover all the remaining questions that were more project-specific, engineering-related. I tried to take good notes throughout. I do apologize if I missed something, but I think I should be able to cover them in full. One thing with the curb change, the color. So, after the curb's placed, and there was a new curb, it was placed slightly later, we have a curing compound we have to put on it, that's kind of, kind of a white in color. Certainly when some curb was placed later, you know, several months later, it has a brighter look. That is something that fades together over time. Actually, other projects, when we do like a spot curb replacement, that's where you actually have a more long-term difference, because you have curb that might have been, you know, 20 years old, and now we have new curb with that, with that curing compound. Here, it has all been placed this year. So it is something we expect to fade together, no different than a new development, that kind of has curb placed in different ways and with driveways going in and out. So, that is pretty typical of a new curb section. I know it is visible today, there's no question. And with that visibility, you can see where some of the new curb was. I, I gave a percentage as a general overall. I think there was reference to some seats. Streets did not have as much curb damage. Certainly Jenner Avenue had probably the most of that additional curb damage, unfortunately. Some concerns about the warranty, you know, what's the longevity? Certainly as a city, as a contract, we have a two-year warranty. Obviously, we don't have per se warranties on curb going forward. But really, I want to address this very specifically. When we had to cut out that curb and patch it, that is actually very typical of a new road section. Any new development that we do in our town, right, they do the base course first, they do the, the curb and gutter, they've placed the wedge. After three years of homes being built, developers have to go and replace all the damaged curb, which can range from 5 to 30%. And they do the patch under that base course. Patches in a wear course is a different story. We do not, we not have that, right? We have a patch underneath that wear course, and the wear course seals it up. No different than actually all the manholes, all the gatefells, all the structures, which is part of the construction process, where we actually have to cut them out, raise them to get ready for wear course patching. So, even without curb damage, there would be those patches underneath the road, but that's where they need to be. It's very standard, and any new road built today does have those. What would be a concern is if we had left the damaged curb. If we had left the damaged curb that had all that damage and the chunks taken out of it, and we tried to pave against that, it would not seal properly. And then water would infiltrate, and that pavement would blow out. So actually, when you think about longevity, if we had left the damaged curb, that would have created definitely a longevity issue. Parking issues were talked about in all the equipment. I will say with this project, due to the size, due to being right on 80th Street, we couldn't have what we call a boneyard. Sometimes we'll have a project with maybe like an old park area we're redoing, and then they can store more materials there, they can put their equipment there. It would not be typical to make the equipment move. That would drive the project price up significantly. Hauling them equipment is a, a major cost mobilization, right? So, that equipment really needs to stay on site during the project. If they had to have a separate truck driver bring that every day from Public Works to do the work, you would see greatly increased costs. And unfortunately, here, we just didn't have a space to have what we call that boneyard, to park things off the road. There's also the mention of the streetlights, that's something I would be happy to talk to Dan about separate. Council is well aware, we had some theft, actually of our streetlight wires. Not as much as other communities, but that's an issue with, we want good access to that splicing box, but with that, others have access to too. So I think it's something the industry's thinking about. I don't think we have the answer for it yet, but certainly I'd be happy to talk more about. There was talk about all the flooding in the roadway with that heavy rain this summer. That was not something we changed with the road, that is the inland protection. So the state mandates us to put in what we call inland protection, the catch basins. It keeps sediment and such gravel, everything from getting into the storm sewer during construction. It's kind of like a bag that goes underneath, and there's a big kind of thing on the backside. And while that's a mandate, it greatly reduces the capacity of those catch basins, there's no question. But we are required to put that in. And then unfortunately, the water just can't get in like it normally does. That's, that should be removed now, it's removed when project is done. There may still be some in, but that's something that would be fully removed before winter, and then you would not have that issue again. So that, that flooding issue would not occur in the future. We made no changes to the storm sewer. I should preface that, there's always massive rain events, right? Storm sewers, even when they're fully designed and operational, can operate at a 10-year rain event. So, I should say never, right? If we get a 100-year rain event, there's areas around town where you do get flooding for a period of a few minutes while the water goes away. And then the other is more just that discussion about, you know, more residents had the concern about longevity, I think I addressed that. Having that patch underneath the wear course is very typical, and there'd be no concern from longevity of the roadway. In terms of, you know, communication, I think that was another thing that we discussed, I, you know, with all the changes, that's something that could be better. I, I can say there was a specific concern about the second round of that curb, and residents were not given notice, maybe that they could drive on it again. And we have a very set process with that curb. I mean, it's done now, but I can certainly say, we'll discuss that with our project team to see what happens, right? There's nothing I can do tonight to kind of rectify that situation, but we will definitely address it, because that's not something we want happening. And we want good communication throughout the project, even when we're reworking it. With that, I think that answers all the questions, but if the council has more for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Ryan, one, one question for you that I'm sure you can answer. You know, we, we've kind of put together, obviously, this pavement management program, so when a road gets, whether it's completely redone with the road and the curb, or a spot curb, whatever. Can you, can you speak a little bit towards what we're, what we're doing now as it relates to future of these roads?
So we, through history of Cottage Grove, many metro cities, we would do what was called chip sealing. Folks in the room probably saw that over the years, where, you know, when a road's new, and every seven years we chip seal it, that was kind of our ongoing, you know, minor maintenance, as we call it in our plan. Unfortunately, there's been changes in the asphalt over time, I won't get into, that's a state of Minnesota thing who really guides that. We saw the chip seals not being, you know, as effective for the, for the long term. So we made a switch to actually doing mill and overlays. And with those mill and overlays that we do now going forward, we've created a funding plan for that, that, you know, that we can kind of do that on a, you know, 15 to 18-year cycle. So residents would see that at that time. And we're looking to increase that life expectancy. And these roads were 30 to 34 years old. We're really looking to hit closer to that 40-year mark in the long term. And because this development does have new curbs in it now, we would incorporate that into our mill and overlay program. When we do a development or a neighborhood with spot curb replacement, it's really not conducive to a mill and overlay, because that curb is gonna have to be replaced too soon. But because they do have all-new curb, we would incorporate that into that program. Like I said, we're really looking to do that mill and overlay at 15 to 20 years, and then ultimately get 40 years of life out of our pavement sections.
But to, just so I'm clear, and you, make sure I'm not gonna say this incorrectly, but when we do those, that's not another direct- but when we do those, that's not another direct assessment to the homeowners, correct?
That's correct, mayor and council. We do not assess for our mill and overlay projects.
That's paid for by us. Well, the citizens pay for it, but it's everybody.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Council, yes, Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. Ryan, thanks for the explanation, and thank you as well to Jennifer and to the city attorney for going through 429 and explaining how that works statutorily. There was mention of, you know, did the, did the city do its homework on the contractor? And I know you know that every time we enter into an agreement to do one of these projects, one of the questions you get asked typically by me is, have we used this contractor before? Do we know if they're any good? In fact, I don't even have to ask anymore because you just tell us. So this is a contractor we've used before, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Clearly, we haven't had issues in the past to this degree. Otherwise, we would have blacklisted them. We wouldn't have taken it. It was the low bid, and we're actually required to take the low bid. So good news is it's a contractor we've used before, low bidder, so everything should be moving in the right direction. And here we have all these issues with, you know, communication and, and some of the execution of the work. So what I'm curious about is, when we do these projects, we always have an onsite project manager. Did this project manager adequately oversee this project? Were there periodic check-ins to make sure that things were going well? And then moreover, if we had these various communication issues, was that the responsibility of the construction team and their project manager? How should that have all worked?
Very good questions, Councilmember Olson. So we do have a resident, a project manager, inspector that, you know, we hire directly through the city, not someone who works for the contractor. I think, you know, within their power and the information they're given, they did their job on this project. I, I will say there was changes with the rain delays and such, different things. But in terms of the real communication, the challenge is, is we can't control, we physically can't control when that contractor decides to do something different. We're, we're working as good as we can with them to get that information. One thing we do see with the wet summers, I will admit, is because we have sandy soils underneath, there are times where Cottage Grove honestly dries out first. Wood buries all clay. They maybe can't work. And we do run into that situation where a contractor, a crew frees up, and maybe that's why they came on a Friday. I don't know the specific situation of why that happened. It's certainly not something we want to see. But it is a contractor just trying to get the work done. But certainly, when you're dealing with resident impacts, it's very important that we keep with that schedule, right? There's a benefit of, oh, we can get at it earlier, but people aren't prepared for that, right? So is that really a benefit? So we can discuss that. So that's not something they're controlling because they're not actually directing the contractor's work. They're out there to inspect the work while they're doing it. So definitely very good confidence in our project team and our, in our, our inspector that we hired directly. Worked with them for, for many, many years and very experienced. So no specific concerns there.
Can you hold it though? Let's, we'll just finish. I will let you do it though.
Yep.
So, so to follow up on that, some of the folks that spoke indicated that, you know, they had taken money out of their own pockets to do sod. And, and I know that one of the specs when we do these kinds of projects is the contractor is supposed to leave any area that they've touched in a condition that is similar to before they touched it. And a lot of times they'll do hydro seeding and things like that. So I'm sure that our inspector, the onsite inspector, is aware of some of those challenges and discrepancies. Will there be any activity in the spring to bring these properties back up to snuff?
That's a good question, Councilmember Olson, Mr. Mayor. So while we're talking about assessment hearing tonight, that is not closing out a project. So we hold what's called retainage. We haven't fully paid the contractor.
Right.
Because there's work that they...
I was going there next, so thank you. Keep going.
Yep, so there's work that they need to touch on, whether it's the seeding. Things are a little complicated with that sod because typically, if there's no curb issue, right, and a resident chooses to sod, you know, we're not going to work on that sod. But because there was the additional curb damage, the contractor did that work to basically replace what residents had paid for out of their own pockets. So we're going to have to also look at that as well. But definitely, we're holding retainage. The contract is not closed out, and there is work again in the spring. I think that's one thing I should have mentioned. There was reference to how late in the year it was. We don't close this out and say, well, we seeded it, we move on. We'll be back, and we'll continue to be back. Also with the settlement, there was some reference to maybe, you know, if the dirt, you know, wasn't compacted properly to the right degree, maybe there's some settlement. That's another thing that we would address. So afterwards, you know, me and the other project team members are definitely available to keep speaking after this meeting. If residents have specific concerns, addresses, things that we need to be looking at, we will take those tonight to make sure they're not getting lost.
Thank you. And I was just going to suggest that, that even folks who aren't here, your neighbors that, that weren't able to be here tonight, if we have, you know, outstanding issues that have not been resolved, please make sure to, to let Ryan and the team know so that we can get those resolved in the spring. So I realize that you don't go through this all the time, but we do. And we hear many of the same concerns with regard to the condition of the front yard, driveways, things of that nature. And the response when we get that information, when these projects are done, is always, we need to make it right. And I think it was Dewey. Is that the right name, Dewey? Your, your speech resonated with me. Because, you know, basically what you were saying is, hey, look, it costs what it costs. But dude, it should be right. And, and that's, that's where I'm at. For whatever we are looking at from an assessment perspective, I think the reasonable expectation on the part of the resident, and this is true of any resident, anytime we do a pavement management project, is it should be right. And, and you shouldn't end up after the fact going, man, this looks terrible. What did they do? How come this isn't right? Why is my driveway messed up? The city has a long history of working with contractors using that escrow money that we hold to ensure that in the spring, because things will change over the winter time, the ground will shift, things will change. In the spring, any outstanding issues need to get taken care of for you so that at the end of the day, it costs what it costs, but it's right, that the value is there. And it doesn't seem like that's necessarily the case in every situation here. So I can tell you, Ryan is very diligent and very technical when it comes to making sure that the project is executed the way that it should be. And again, we have blacklisted contractors in the past. I'm glad to know this is a contractor we've used before, but something got messed up before the cake got baked. So the good news is it's not fully baked yet. And the last thing, Ryan, is testing. So there was comment about how long is it going to last, right? I know you do extensive testing on road projects before we even order the project because some roadways have a little bit longer lifespan. I know we do the thin overlays and things. How do we reassure the residents that what they're getting now is going to be a, a, a high-quality product that's going to last into the future? Because you're right, nobody wants to get reassessed again in 15 years. God, no. That would be terrible, and it shouldn't work that way. So can you speak to that a little?
Yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when it comes to testing, which is done by a different third party, there's a handful of them in the, the metro that are very reputable firms that do this work. So really, every step of the way is tested. You know, we have that Class 5 underneath, which we maybe have to supplement. We're doing density testing on that. You don't want, you want full compaction so things aren't settling in the roadway. When it comes to the asphalt, that's the same thing. There's multiple different tests that we do onsite. MINDOT actually also does petunias plant inspections, so they're actually looking at it where it's actually produced. And we do that for our road projects. I will say not all cities actually do that for their residential road projects. Sometimes they just do it where they're mandated to do it. We choose to do it for these projects to make sure we're really looking at it where it's actually being produced. Concrete's the same way, where we actually have, you know, all the testing with what's the air content, what's the strength. And in some of these processes, we actually go above and beyond even like the state standards when it comes to how we do the road density testing. We do things a little different where a lot of times they just cut cores in the road when it's done. And first of all, you now have a core and a hole in your road that you're patching. We do a different process with a nuclear density gauge. You're actually looking into that throughout the paving process, make sure they're meeting density. So that is something that, that we have a full program for.
Okay, thank you very much. I knew that you did a lot of that. And I'm also aware that St. Paul Park does fix their roads. They're working on Third Street right now. So they have the same issues we have with, you know, benefit appraisals and all those kinds of things. And I know you do some work helping them out periodically, but I certainly appreciate your, your responses to the questions. And I hope the residents can count on that anything that isn't currently right, we're going to work hard to make right heading into either spring of next year. Even we get another year like last year, maybe we'll be working into November. Who knows? Thank you.
Councilmember Thiri.
I guess this is more a financial question. And I, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more precisely, you know, what it would cost us to, say, defer the payment till after the holidays with a, with no, no interest charge during that time to the resident? If you can do a calculation for me, please.
Mayor, members of the council, as Brenda is coming, I did do one quick math because I suspected that might come up. The first number that I will tell you is we anticipate approximately 30% of the payments to be made. So that'd be about $166,000 that we're anticipating that would be paid. So that's helping us pay our debt issuances. So you're going to lose that amount to make our first debt issuance payment. I'm sure Brenda is right now calculating the other number that you asked for, but just to give you a flavor of the magnitude of the dollars that we're talking about.
Approximately about $200,000.
Okay.
And so...
And so if we, what's our ability to, you know, if we, if we consider that coming out of a, temporarily out of another fu, a fund somewhere, and then it gets replaced after, after the start of the year?
Mayor, members of the council, I will tell you, you have set your preliminary levy to include that debt issuance. So the 200 and some thousand that Brenda is referencing, you would need to make an additional cut in your 25 budget because you won't be able to recover that payment of your debt issuance.
Well, you'll recover it after, after they, they actually then pay in January or after the holidays.
You wouldn't get that interest back for that debt payment?
No, but you're not talking, that's not the interest, right? That's, you're expecting...
Here's, here's the thing though. I mean, if you think about it, and, and we're going to still see if any council has questions, and I'll, I'll let this gentleman come back up and ask his question. So if you defer it this time, what about the next one?
Well, this one, it's a special situation because...
What's special about it?
Well, it's a lot later in the season. They had a lot, you know, the issues, it's, it's right, right before the holidays. I don't think if, unless we looked, I don't think a lot of the others, a lot of the others are, are a little earlier in the, in the year and such, right? No?
No.
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 I believe that we were substantially complete even earlier than we had anticipated this year.
No, we, it's typically October is when we do these special assessments, when we've done these road projects. So all I'm saying is, yes, there's some unfortunate things that happen in this, this particular project, but in the, in the grand scheme of things, I don't know that delaying it, you know, delaying the payment or whatever, the process, until January is going to make any difference.
Well, we've never had anybody request it before.
Well, but for us, it's going to make a huge difference.
Well, I don't know. I, it doesn't sound like it was that huge. I mean, because it's not, it's the impact of, of money and then, and replacing it so forth. I, we can, we can talk. I, I, I don't, I don't understand how, how it's going to make that much difference if it gets replaced, you know, a certain amount gets deferred and so forth. But, so...
Okay. Councilmember Kamada.
Jennifer, you said the, this would show up on the, the May 2025 tax statement. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the first time they would see it. Because typically, we hold the assessment hearings in October. We give them that 30 days to pay. As a city, we legally have to certify our assessment rolls by the end of November to the county. That puts it on the assessment roll then in May the first time. So if we miss that certification to the county, you miss in essence an entire year because you're, you're not going to be certifying until later. That's why that date is critical. So just to let you know on how that certification works.
And then another question I have might be more for Myron. And I think Steve Dennis, when he was on council, he was also a member of the pavement management task force when, when it, when the city made that initial shift.
As was I.
As, as were you. And, and if I, if I understand from previous conversations about pavement management, that the, the reason it was structured this way with the 45% contribution was to be more equitable, right? So if, if we're repaving 80th Street or, or Jamaica Avenue, which is an arterial roadway, the city's putting the whole cost for those projects because it benefits everyone equally. But I'm, I'm not going to, you know, better, better way to phrase this is, the street that I live on, you know, Eli shouldn't have to pay for my street with his taxes if he's never going to drive on my street. And, and that was the argument for the, for the, the, the way it was split up between city and, and resident contributions. So I think, I think that sounds reasoning. I, I mean, it, it's, it's a lot of money when, when it comes to your turn. But, you know, to say for the last 30 years, every homeowner on Jenner Avenue was paying for somebody else's roadway that they're never, ever going to drive on. You know, I could, I could be frustrated about that as well, if, if that were, if that were the...
Yeah, unfortunately, it, it, it was easy to start it, but it, it's difficult to, to leave it because of, you know, just the equity and the situation. And while these people had to pay for theirs, now all of a sudden, these people aren't. So I'm not, I'm not questioning that at all. I'm just, I was just looking at the holiday season and requests I was making.
This is tough work, that's for sure. Yeah, I think with, as Jennifer said, you know, having a deadline to, to, to get these assessments to the county in order to get them on the tax roll makes it challenging to, to defer. I think the, the interest accrual part, you know, we just got done with budgeting. And, and I mean, we were talking about $50,000 items in our budget. So to, to say that we're okay, you know, incurring an unexpected interest charge of, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think that's a hard no for me.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to add?
I don't. Thank you though.
No, no, I promise you, I was going to come, come on up. Yeah, please. I did not close the public hearing.
Steve Gunderson, 7774 Jenner Avenue. Who was the onsite manager from the city who was out there? I'm retired, and I was out there almost every day, and I didn't see a soul from the city.
I'm speaking to the microphone.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, sorry.
No, he's going to speak into the microphone.
And then the other thing I wanted to have check is a reference to Nancy's lake in front of her house. I have a, I had the same silt kit, silt, whatever it's called, that black thing in my storm sewer right next to my house. They took it out. We had a little rain, and I still have a puddle, okay? So it's not draining like it drained prior. So I, I don't know if that's a grade issue or whatever, but I talked to that kid from Bolton and Mankin. He said that that was the issue. He thought that they were going to get it right on the final grade. I don't, I'm not an engineer. I don't play one on TV. I don't have, know anything about what you do. So that's really what I wanted to ask about.
Can I, can I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind?
Yeah, Brian.
And Ryan, chime in. So you mentioned that in front of your home, and then Nancy's, you had essentially standing water, right?
Yes, sir.
And is that, Ryan, is, is that because of the work we were doing on the storm sewers at that time? Or what exactly was that caused by? Or was it just a low spot?
Mayor, members of the council, so the, the big rain event in, in the large...
Right, right.
That was from the, that was from the inland protection. If there's an ongoing issue, we'll definitely take the address. We can go out there and we can take a look at it directly.
Yeah.
Just to make sure there's no lingering issues that were causing not all the water to drain. We do want that water to drain away.
Right.
The big, I think there was reference to Lake Jenner. That was from the, the inland protection being in during the construction.
Okay, all right. But we, we can go out there and look, though, to make sure that all the grading is right and everything? Okay.
And in terms of, in terms of our inspection team, they made reference to Bolton and Mankin.
Bolton and Mankin, that's who we contract with.
Yep. So the way frankly cities are, are structured, you know, we do not have staff that, that serve in that role. So we have consultants that we work with, been in the industry a long time, lots of experience in... experience, and frankly know more about even construction than anyone. So those are the folks that are the, the day-to-day inspectors, and they are out there while the work is occurring.
Okay, so just to clarify, the Bolton and Mankin kid was out there, he was 25 years old, maybe he didn't have a lot of experience.
Thanks for that.
You want to come on up? Yep.
So I'm going to piggyback to Steve.
I do need you to come up there, sorry.
Come on up, yep.
Again, Dan Schueller, 7929 Jenner Avenue South. I'm going to piggyback to Lake Jenner. The sewers on my side of the street and on the other, and 7909, which is John and Melissa Fortuna, we have had continuous drainage issues for years. I'm hoping this, this solidifies it and clears it up, I'm not expecting it because we have it spring, we have it all the time, it's been an ongoing issue, and I've been in the house for 15 years, they've been in for 10, and we see it every year. So I'm just saying, this is not new.
Did they fix catch basins and stuff during this project?
Mayor, members of the council, so we did do repairs, saw the catch basins, you know, there may be rings, there may have been settlement, certainly curb sections, the first ones that settle over time are the ones by the catch basins, those are the things that we're fixing, and those are the, the issues that we are working to address with projects like this.
So he, he should leave you some information so we can go in? Okay, good.
I think, I think it's something we can certainly look at come spring, but that is the type of things we're addressing. We're not adding storm sewer, we're not adding catch basins, when you get those huge rain events, frankly, streets are going to get water in them, it's, it's just not practical in any street, in any city, to be able to capture every single mat, really large, like the August 29th rain event, right?
Right, but typically when we do these, you guys check all that.
Yep.
Like, you take that opportunity to make sure everything's working properly.
Yes, yeah. We want everything draining properly when we're done, through the catch basins, so we can look at that for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then after we're done with, with you, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, so then council can discuss, so go ahead.
Thank you. So a couple of counterpoints. First one, council member Tony, so in regards to your street, you don't expect everyone else to pay for it. That's one way to do it, but everything else, there's parks that I don't use in Cottage Grove, and I pay for them. I've never used the police force in Cottage Grove. We all pay for it equally, we don't expect that the only people that pay for police are the ones that have to call them for something. So it works to split it up. You could invite me over to your house, and I could visit you, and I would use your street. It works. Last time we were here, Mayor, you brought up that the only time that you saw a project be voted down, they had to come back several years later, and the cost was double, and you said that, I think it's the neighborhood you live in now.
Yes, yeah.
A lot of your neighbors were very upset by that. But why would they be upset if they were getting the same special benefit in return? Because it, say it costs $12,000, well, they got $12,000 theoretically. We know it's, it's not actually working that way. So my question is, what happens to the special benefit when the, when the road degrades? What, what happens to it?
Okay.
We can't answer it, so it's not there. It's, it's, there has to be a special benefit.
Well, and, and I, I think our, our attorney and our staff did say that, you know, legally and with special benefit appraisals, it's showing that. Now, you may not agree with that, and that's fine. I may not have agreed with the amount of assessment that I got when my road was done in front of my house, but the reality is, that's what the price came to. And, and it was actually more than this project that was in your neighborhood back then when I did, and that was many years ago. And I did, and yours was full curb, correct? The whole thing was full curb? Mine was too, back then, was full curb and, and street, so.
May I just, I just make one quick, quick thing, real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, just in terms of the project itself, and just in the effort of trying to maybe come to some resolution on it, it, it isn't so much the money issue as, as it is the principle of it. But just, I remember a couple of sessions back, council member Kamada, you talked about, you know, it was equivalent of like doing a kitchen remodel, right? And I kind of go back to what Dewey talked about, like, if you did a kitchen remodel, that improves the value of your home, and therefore you're, you're experiencing the benefit of it. Well, what if, what if you walked into your kitchen and the trim was all different colors? And it wasn't done to the standard that it was supposed to be done to? And things don't match, and they don't work right, and, yeah, they're going to come back and make it look, look right, and he's telling us that the, the curbs are going to fade over time, but we can at least agree that the special benefit is the aesthetics of a new road in front of your house, correct?
I don't know that I would say that, it probably adds to it, personally speaking, for me.
There's several elements that go into the special benefit appraisal.
Right. Other than the fact that there's probably, oh, well, you have a new road, so you don't have to worry about a special benefit assessment for 30 years. It's a manufactured benefit. So my point is, the road looks the way it looks now, so we're arguing that the special benefit isn't realized unless we sell the property right now. But you're saying that doesn't matter 30 years from now, it adds a special benefit right now. It doesn't matter that the, that the, the curbs may blend in after 15 years, they don't blend right now. So I would at least ask and implore that there is at least a revision to the estimate and to how much we're paying for, because we definitely didn't get what we paid for. And I don't know if that comes from the contractor or what, but at least I would request that there's a revision or a renewed estimate of the special benefit that is provided. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead then and close the public hearing, and council, I would say it's on our screen, but it's not on our screen right now.
No, it's not on our screen.
Our screens are blank, but I do have it up on here, unless Ryan wants to pop it in there.
During the public hearing, a resident bumped the computer and turned it off.
Oh, okay. All right, that happens.
It's a simple accident, that's what Connor came up here for, so I can see if we can, I'll let Tammy log back in.
Well, while she's, while she's doing that, I guess I'll, I'll look, is there any other questions council has? I, I do want to just add just a couple, couple points of interest, because I think it's, it's somewhat relevant, so. The, every city makes a determination based on, in our case, the pavement management task force, and there was a process, and then the pavement management task force prior to, or, there was a process prior to the pavement management task force, which I think you were on, and you were on, and I know a few others that were way back, and the determination back then by that citizens group was, here's the better way of doing it. And I don't recall what it was before then, I don't know if it was 50/50, 60/40, meaning 60 being the homeowners, 40 being the city, I don't recall, but they determined what the, what that amount would be. I would tell you that there are cities out there right now, in the Twin Cities, that put 100% of the assessment on, on their residents. I don't recall what St. Paul Park is, but it's a lot higher than ours for their, their assessment process that they do. So our, our citizens kind of came back to the, the council and staff, and this is before, I think before I even became mayor, with whatever the, what, what the plan was. The other thing is, obviously, we're not happy with, you know, what, what the contractor did, or the lack of communication. I will tell you, there's been other projects that we've had in our community, not specific to this particular, and contractor, where we basically told them we're not, they can't do business in our community anymore because of the quality of the work that they did. We've also had situations where the, we required them to come back out consistently, even be above and beyond the, the escrow, to take care of issues. I know, like, even in my neighborhood, they did not do sod, they did grass, and of course, when they did this grass, it was weeds, and I'm kind of like, I remember what, when you said your neighbor is like at the pristine lawn, well, that's me. And it bothered the heck out of me that the bottom part of my yard wasn't looking the same as the rest of my yard, so. And I did some of the same things some of you, it sounds like, so I do appreciate the fact that you're all taking the, taking your, you know, your property to heart, because I did the same thing. I could have waited for our, the contractor to come back out and spread some more grass seed, but I'm like, I'm just going to do it. You know, I'm just going to get it done, I don't want to wait. But I will say, you know, we will, whatever the issues are, we will address those. We've had this conversation, sod versus grass seed, over and over and over again, I mean, I suppose at some point, we can talk about this again as a collective group. I'm personally a sod guy, versus throwing, you know, hydro seed out, out there now, but again, that does raise the cost, because there will be a, a cost factor to that, that and unfortunately then ends up getting passed along to the, to the end user. And then a lot of the things, and I mentioned this briefly earlier, you know, there used to be a situation where we did like, we used to charge for like Millen overlays and things like that into the future, so we would, after a certain period of time, come back into your neighborhood, do a Millen overlay, and then, and then charge you for it. Because in between that, we used to do this chip program, and we opted to not do that anymore, and, and in doing that, the money that we were putting aside for that chip overlay, or what, seal coating, or whatever you want to call it, that money now goes directly towards Millen overlay at, at the, meaning we're not assessing homeowners. So we're trying to do, from our standpoint, of what's the best thing that we can do in order to be fair to everybody. And then the other last thing I'll just mention real quick on, on being fair is, at some point, every single street, non-arterals but neighborhood streets, are going to get done. So whether it's full curb replacement, the street's going to get redone, and the process is very similar to the same. And that's one of the challenges and the, the comments that we've had and, and talk about every year at Budget, is we have our staff go out and check roads and tell us, can we get another year or two out of this road before, you know, we don't have to make it a complete reconstruct, right? We try to get up to that, literally up to that point where it's not going to, it's, it's going to be okay, and that we don't have to spend as much money, and that's mean, if we don't have to spend as much money, obviously means homeowners don't. So we're very cognizant of that, I know I am, to make sure that we're careful. But I also believe that our, our program is, is solid. I know there are some people out here that have some concerns about the benefit appraisal, and that's, every, every one of you have the, the ability to, you know, contest it, like we got a couple letters, and if that's the direction you want to go from a legal standpoint, that's absolutely, everyone's right, that's, that's what's there. So I just, for me, from my point, you know, it, yes, there was some stuff that maybe didn't happen the way we would like it to happen, and I would be a little upset if I were in your neighborhood too, with some of the things that were happening in your, in your area. Hopefully, some of that stuff, we're going to react to, and, and we'll kind of watch, I guess, to the future, what this contractor, if he bids for other projects in our community in the future. But I think the project is what the project is, and, you know, I think this is the right thing to do, is to move forward. Councilmember Kamada.
I'm really disheartened and frustrated at the experience that these people had with this project. I know that a lot of the aspects, a lot of the challenges that they faced are things that were outside of our control, but I'm, I'm hopeful, because of the fact that we withhold a portion of that payment, and in the past, that's been a good mechanism to make sure that when challenges come up, that they get remedied, and that they get remedied in the shortest amount of time possible. So I, I, I know that staff is going to make sure that they're holding these, the contractor accountable for these issues, and that these will get done. I would like, for whatever it's worth, my 20% for staff to, to pay special attention to make sure that this stuff gets resolved, right? The second time that this contractor, again, you know, they go out to fix something, and they end up causing irrigation and sod damage, so like, from the customer experience, right? And, and I think the, unfortunately, I think the people that are there doing the road are not thinking of it in a customer service mindset of like, hey, I have to go, I have to be, I'm accountable to this homeowner for this project, the way somebody who would maybe go in and do a kitchen remodel would, right? They don't, they maybe weren't engaging directly with the constituents the way we do. So I look at it from a customer service perspective, where like, they didn't get the level of service that I would expect for me, or for you, or for anybody else in the world. And, and so I think that's where we don't, we didn't have control of what happened initially, we didn't have control of the weather. Those are all things that were outside of our control as a city, but what is within our control is using that mechanism that's built into the contract, withholding those funds, to make sure that these things do get addressed, and they get taken care of properly. So I just want to make sure that they know that I'm resolved, and I know staff is resolved, to make sure that these things get addressed properly.
Okay. Any other comments, council?
Mayor, I'd like to move Resolution 2024-143, adopting the assessment role for the 2024 pavement management project.
All right, so I have a motion by council member Olson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Garza. Any further discussions, council? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So before you leave, if there is anything that you need to bring up, and even after today, like, I think councilor Olson mentioned, if there's an issue, maybe that you've heard from a neighbor or something like that.
Yes, please.
I, I don't, don't live too far from you guys, so you know I can, and I, I'll say a family member is, lives in your neighborhood, so I, I'm over there periodically, so I mean, if there is something you want me to see, or staff to see, I'd be more than happy to do that, because we don't want it, I don't want you to have to deal with something like, if it was flooding before, and that doesn't fix the issue.
We need to.
You know, we need to.
We need to fix it.
And we need to fix it, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll leave it for staff then. All right, the final public hearing this evening is C, which is the Oldman Middle School Easement Vacations Drainage and Utility Easement Access Agreement, and our associate planner, Connor Jakes, is going to walk us through this one. Welcome back again, Connor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to Mr. Mayor and the council. It's good to be with you. There are two easement vacations before you this evening, one is related to the private water main, and one is related to the storm sewer on the Oldman Middle School campus. As the council is aware, the school district is currently working through administrative review approvals for two building additions, one on the western part of the building for the cafeteria, and one on the south side of the building for a classroom addition. As part of all site plan applications, staff does conduct a thorough review of the entire site, both existing easements, infrastructure, to ensure that the easements are effective and providing what is necessary. The two easements before you this evening were found to need changes, which is why the item is before you. First easement we'll discuss is the drainage and utility easement overlaying the private water main that loops around the middle school. Given the water main is private, the city does not conduct maintenance of that water main itself, however, the city does conduct routine maintenance related to the hydrants on site. So each of the outdents shown along the blue area is, does signify hydrant. The reason for the easement in the first place is for the city to conduct that maintenance, however, after review of the easement language, it wasn't necessarily clear that the city was only conducting and accessing that easement area for hydrant maintenance. As a result, the proposed vacation is before you, and proposed to replace that existing easement as an access easement that would overlay the entire parcel. In that easement language, staff worked with the city attorney and school district to be sure that it's solely for the hydrant maintenance. The second easement vacation before you this evening is related to the storm sewer on the western part of the Oldman campus, as signified in red on screen before you. On the western part, there is a constructed stormwater pipe, as signified in green on screen. The red signifies the existing easement locations. As you can see, the easement locations do not sufficiently cover the constructed pipe, as that was constructed in an incorrect location, however, it was field, field verified that it's operating correctly, so no issues there. Staff is proposing to vacate the easements on site and replace that with one new easement that sufficiently covers the pipe, allows us to conduct our long-term maintenance of that pipe and access the allowed area, and have sufficient space to do so. With that, the recommendation is on screen before you. I will note that all easement vacations do require, do require a public hearing, which is the first recommendation on screen. The second and third recommendations are to rescind the July approvals and vacate that water main easement. Fourth recommendation is to approve the access easement that overlays that entire parcel solely for hydrant access. Fifth recommendation is to vacate that storm sewer easement, and then the sixth and final recommendation is to approve the new storm sewer easement. So with that, staff is available for any questions and recommendations on screen.
A lot of technical. A lot of technical detail, that's for sure. Counsel, any comments for Connor? All right. All right. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't necessarily see anybody in here that might want to talk of this. I don't know about you back there. But if anybody want to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And counsel will start with number two, if you want. We'll start with Councilmember Kamada.
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-145, rescinding July 17, 2024, city council actions related to Oltman Middle School.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Kamada, second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Who would do number three?
Mayor, I'll move Resolution 2024-146, vacating, rescinding, terminating, and releasing a permanent easement and temporary easement for water main for Lot 1, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Number four?
Motion to approve the permanent access easement for Lot 1, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries, excuse me.
I would like to adopt Resolution 2024-147, vacating, rescinding, terminating, and releasing permanent easements for storm sewer on Lot 2, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. And Mr. Kamada, you want to take the last one?
I move to approve the permanent easement for the storm sewer over a portion of Lot 2, Block 1, New Oltman Middle School.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada, second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Moving along here. 10 is bid wars are unknown this evening. 11 is regular agenda items, which there aren't on this evening. 12 is council comments request. I will start with Councilmember Kamada.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything to add tonight.
Oh, there we go. All right. Moving right along. So then we'll move to Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things this evening. First, I want to make sure that everybody out there who's watching this knows, early voting is now available at the Washington County South Service Center, which is on the same campus as City Hall here. If you are interested in taking advantage of that opportunity, they are currently open 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. You can vote absentee, in person, or by mail. And I believe next week, you'll also be able to go in on Saturday, starting next week. But early voting is available. I want to encourage everybody in our community to maintain the sense of pride that we have as a state here in Minnesota, with the highest voter turnout of any state in the nation typically during each election. It'd be great to have all eligible voters be able to actually get out and cast their ballot. It's important, and your voice matters, so please do that. And then the second thing, Mr. Mayor, is I just want to compliment the organizers for last week's Cottage Grove Fire Department Open House. It was extremely well-attended. Lots of young families that I saw there, tons of stuff for people to do. And we even had a number of our alumni firefighters on hand to be able to help with the open house, which I thought was really special. And I could tell they were having a lot of fun. So kudos to Chief Pritchard, Deputy Chief Aragoni. I know Mike Dandle always has a hand in those things, and anybody else who may have had their fingers in, you know, getting that organized and put together. I think it was a hit with the residents, and certainly was something to be proud of. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you. I'll move to Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, one thing I have to mention that, you know, with Halloween coming up, and you go get your costumes and everything. Fortunately, I don't have to put a costume on. I still scare people. But so, but a week from Saturday, the 26th, the Monster Bash Parade starts at 10 o'clock, and it runs from the admin, the school admin center down to Applebee's, and it's a great time. So grab the kiddos and get on out there.
Here we go. Looking forward to it. Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm going to jump on the bandwagon for Halloween celebrations. It looks like we're going to have a really cool spooky skating Spooktacular up at our ice arena. So that will be on October 30th, and that should be a lot of fun. That'll be following our Monster Bash Parade. And then we'll have our Pumpkin Chuck on November 1st. That's a lot of fun. So bring your families, come out, and throw those pumpkins, and watch them roll down the hill, or from way high in the fire truck's ladders. It's a lot of fun, though. So if you have some time, come on out and have fun with us. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Sounds good. So a couple items for the public. So this past Monday, we had the opportunity for two things I'll actually mention. One of them was, we did a trail dedication to Katie and Conway Olson down at Hamlet Park, which was a very, very nice event, well-attended by the family. Katie wasn't able to be there because she was sick, but her kids were all there, along with many of our staff, a couple of us, and Councilmember Garza joined us with her daughter, and a lot of, I'll call them former elected officials from the area that were able to be there just to acknowledge the amount of love that Katie and Conway Olson had for our community and the amount of time and effort that gave back. And matter of fact, while I was there, saying what I know about Katie and Conway Olson, it was interesting to hear other stories of things that were even before my time, about the fact that Conway Olson was one of the instrumental people to, I'll say, prevent Cottage Grove from being called Washington instead of the city of Cottage Grove. So, and oh, by the way, it would have been Washington, both Woodbury and Cottage Grove together as one city. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And your name came up a lot, Connor, about how much excited everybody was going to give all this data and such to you. So I figured you might enjoy that. But that was really cool. And then shortly thereafter, we did an open house at Hamlet, just to talk about the Preserve Play Prosper program, which of course is the local option sales tax that we're looking to provide for three, I'll say, three park amenities. We're going to do, other than that event that we had, being able to share information with the public, this coming Monday, yes, Monday, which is the 21st of October, at 12 noon, Zach Doctor, our Parks and Rec Director, and myself are going to be doing a Facebook Live event. And it's basically, one is going to be answering questions that have been asked out there about different things, you know, why is it this? Why are you doing that? What does this mean? What if it doesn't pass? You know, that kind of stuff. But it's also going to be an opportunity for the public who are going to tune in to check it out, to ask questions. And we'll answer them live. And so I just wanted to throw that out there. So we'll kick it off with, you know, some of the general questions that people have been asking us over the last few months about this program. And then if there's other questions, or maybe we don't quite answer it right, we're going to take comments that come in, and they'll be provided to Zach and I. And again, that'll be this coming Monday at 12 noon. And I believe it'll be, you know, I'll, I'm not going to say an hour, because sometimes Facebook events last like 15 minutes or a half hour. But if people are interested and they're asking questions, we're going to be there. And we want to make sure that our voters are very informed in their decisions. And then I'll just throw out there, because it's, you were just talking about holiday events. I do want to, we do have locally grown theater, who is actually going to be out here at City Hall, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, doing Frankenstein monster as a play. It is free to the public, so I encourage you to stop out and check that out, because we have a lot of things going on. You got our Monster Bash Parade, as we mentioned. We have Pumpkin Chuck. We've got skating Spooktacular. You've got the Haunted Experience down at Zivix, which is going on in the community. And then I get to finally say, yes, we're getting into the holiday Christmas season.
Here we go.
The Holiday Train has announced that they will be Wednesday, December 11th, at 5:15, coming to Cottage Grove once again. They're very excited. The gentleman that I speak with through CP Rail is, matter of fact, going to make a special trip down here with his kids to attend our event, which is one of the largest, what is the largest in the US. And so I wanted to throw that out there. But even before that, I want to mention that Thursday, December 5th, which is a little bit, almost a week forward, or previous, I should say, December 5th, at 4:30 here at City Hall, is our second annual Hometown Holiday Celebration. We've done other things with tree lightings in the past, but really kind of made this thing a bigger event within our community. And so I encourage everybody to put those two dates specifically on your calendar. So Thursday, December 5th, here at City Hall, the Hometown Holiday Celebration. And then, of course, Wednesday, December 11th, at 5:15, down along Highway 61 and on West Point Douglas Road, the arrival of the Canadian Pacific Kansas City train, holiday train. So I did, I finally, it took a while, but I finally got that right.
The real question everybody wants answered is, have you started putting up your Christmas decorations yet?
This weekend.
Of course. Yep.
Matter of fact, I had to go get a shot in my arm, because my arms were bothering me. So I told him, he didn't want to do a shot, little quick thing here, didn't want to do a shot yet, but I said, look, I need it, because I have to get up on the roof and put lights up. And he goes, okay, we'll get you the shot. So I got a cortisone shot in my arm and therapy next week. So, physical therapy, I'll say that. I better say that.
And I'm sure the display will be bigger and better than ever before.
Oh, yeah. Yes. A lot more, a lot more things being added this year.
Awesome. Good.
All right. Next, 13 is workshop open to the public. We do not have one. Same with 14, which is workshop closed to the public. So at this point, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second?
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Kamada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.